This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we got Facebook Live going. We've got our... It's like everybody's on board, so... And it looks like 6 o'clock. So, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 20-03, Executive Order Number 20-24, and due to the concerns related to the coronavirus, this city council meeting will be conducted virtually. No member of the city council is attending in person with the exception of the mayor. All other city council members are appearing virtually, and this meeting is closed to the physical attendance of the public. The public can participate via Facebook Live, GoToMeeting, or by submitting concerns or questions to info.belleview.net. I would ask that all public attending via GoMeeting, please mute your microphones. Members of the public will only be allowed to speak during public hearings once opened up to the public, and I will call on members of the public one at a time to speak. The agenda can be found on our city website at Bellevue.net under the Clerks tab. We will skip the Pledge of Allegiance, so we all don't have to stand up. Item number three, call to order. Susan, would you call the meeting to order? I will call.
Mr. Stinson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
And Ms. Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is still conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that can be found undergoing online under Nebraska Revised Statutes 84-1407 through 84-1414, as well as the Governor's Executive Order 20-03. It's also at the entry of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. 5A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Shannon, second by Burns to approve the agenda. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would make an amendment to pull item 15C from tonight's agenda. Based on discussions with legal, the county board did not take the anticipated actions, so there's no need for the city council to take the action we were going to take tonight. So, legal has asked that we pull 15C from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Shannon, do I have a second?
I will make... Go ahead.
A motion by Shannon, second by Preister to remove 15C from the agenda. Any other comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
She looks frozen.
Ms. Welch, did you hear me? Or can you hear me?
I can now. Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. All voting yes, carried.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, that was the vote on the amendment, correct?
That was the vote on the amendment to remove, well, yes, 15C.
Removing 15C.
Thank you.
Yep. So, let's... Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
We already have a motion to approve the agenda on the floor.
You, Shannon?
Correct.
Yes, and I don't remember the second.
Mr. Burns?
Okay, so we have a motion by Shannon, second by Burns, to approve the amended agenda. Any questions? Bree?
No questions.
Okay, please vote.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 5B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. So, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, second by Welch to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Takes us to item number seven, special presentations. 7A, bond refunding update. And we have Cody Wickham here with us, and it's like Michael Rogers, I believe. And Rich, do you want to kick it off, or...
No, I'll let Cody jump right in.
Okay. Go ahead, Cody.
Thanks, Rich. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to start by talking a little bit about what we've done in the recent past year. That slide that you're looking at is the Municipal Market Index of AAA bond rates and their history over the last 10 years. You can see what we experienced right there at the start of COVID, middle of March, and where we've come out on the other side. Right where that spike happened was right when we had just sold the Convention Center bonds, and we were gearing up to do the general obligation refunding bonds of both the tax exempt and taxable series when that happened. So, you know, the refunding issues, we've been through a handful now with the city. It's not always one that we come back and report the results, but this being the biggest bond issue that the city's ever done, we thought it was important to talk about kind of the challenges that we were faced and the results that we obtained. So, I'm going to throw a handful of numbers at you here, but I'll sum these up at the end. So, the tax exempt bonds, so if you recall, those were a combination of various SIDs that the city annexed that had very high interest rates and a number of different payment dates. So, the refunding of those was twofold, both to line up the payment dates to help with the city's cash flow, as well as generate as much savings as we could through lower interest rates. So, when we, when the council approved those back in November 5th, we were looking at a true interest cost of 2.809 and projected savings of 356,000. We priced those, we caught that right after coming out of COVID, where more or less catching the market at the very bottom. A true interest cost on the tax exempt, it didn't move that much because it was just three maturities, but a true interest cost of 2.769% and a net savings of 396,399. So, we improved by about $40,000 on the tax exempt. On the taxable bonds, which was the bigger chunk, because you had a number of SIDs that had not yet met their call date, on November 5th, we were looking, projecting a true interest cost of 2.65% and net savings of 574,940. The final pricing of those where we locked the city in was at 2.219 and a net savings of $1,059,380. The Convention Center bonds, these were the ones that were done just before, projecting on November 5th, the true interest cost of 2.702, and we got them done at a 2.007. The projected savings on November 5th was 759,644, and the final locked-in net savings was 1,524,509. So, the summation of those figures that I threw at you, we were projecting back in November 5th of 1,690,942, and where we finished up was 2,980,288. So, I think all the transactions were a complete success, and I think the city should be commended for being proactive and adopting the ordinances and taking the necessary steps that allowed us the flexibility that we had. A big part of these, the rates that we obtained have to do with the city's AA+ rating that was a firm, stable, and I think, and I promise nobody told me to say this, you guys have an outstanding finance director in place. The budget is really in great shape, and the rating agencies confirm that fact. Mayor Hyek and Jim were also instrumental on those rating calls, just their knowledge of the local economy and the direction that the city is headed, just really have you guys in an outstanding position. And in fact, they told us that you guys would basically be a AAA credit, the highest possible one out there, but for, if it weren't for situations that were out of your control, and that mainly has to do with median and average income ratios of the local economy, and again, things that really have nothing to do with the city's finances. So, you guys are in a great spot, these transactions, I think were outstanding, given all the challenges that we faced, and again, the proactive nature of the council and kind of our reaction on our end between Rich and the administration of not reacting scared and showing some patience and not showing panic. I think we caught these things at the absolute perfect time, so just a real home run for, again, the biggest bond issues that the city has ever, ever taken on. Any questions about those numbers before I move on to the second part of this presentation?
It's awesome news so far, but I might have misunderstood you. Can you say that comment you said about Rich again?
No, no, it was one time only. Hopefully, it's being recorded for him.
Cody, this is Bree. If you need me to scroll to any certain pages, feel free to ask, okay?
Okay, I'll have you. Go ahead and move to the next page. So, future business, so we're constantly monitoring the city's debt, and while those, while we took out a number of the, of your big issues there with the ones we just accomplished, we couldn't lump in these 2015s because they had not yet reached their call date. So, we have a new set of bonds that you did, general obligation bonds in 2015. Scroll down just a touch more, Bree. You can see the highlights. Those are the outstanding maturities that we're looking to refinance, and you can see the highlight below. The call date is July 15th, 2020. So, we're nearing that call date. So, this is just kind of next up in line. Where else can we save the city some money? If you go ahead and scroll to the next page, we ran a refunding analysis on this. We're looking at total proceeds to refund these bonds, just over 2 point, or just under 2.2 million. We do have lumped in the principal and interest payment that would be due in December. That'll kind of be up to Rich if he wants to roll that in or pay that upon closing. Go ahead and scroll to the next page. This is the summary of refunding results. The blue number, that's the current average interest rate of those bonds that are outstanding at 2.632%, and the projected net interest cost through a refunding that we feel we can obtain a 1.203, just continuing to lower the overall interest cost of the city. You scroll down to the next page. What this means in dollars, annual savings, you see that big negative 475 early on because we would, again, we were proposing to have you go ahead and make the December payment that's coming due now since it's so close. If we decide against that, then those numbers will shift around. But if you're looking at annual savings of the 60,000, scroll down a little bit more, and then a large savings at the end. But that's, that is also kind of a result of shifting those principal payments around. But all in all, you're looking at net savings to the, net savings to the city of an additional 144,560. We sold some bonds this morning for Richardson County, and the rates have actually improved even a little bit more, and those were non-rated, so I actually expect, if we can move quickly, that that number would only get better. Now, we do have to, we do have to hold another ratings call. I was hoping to forego that step since we were just talking to them not long ago, but because of COVID and everything else going on across the country, they do want to have another conversation. So, we have a ratings call set up for next week, and as soon as we have that rating back, we'll be ready to hit the market again, assuming you all decide to move forward with the ordinance and waive the three reading rule. Go ahead to the next page, Bree. Those are the rates that we were looking at, potentially locking in. Again, none of these are locked in until we actually go to market, which we can't do until we have the rating back, but those were our estimations for tonight's purposes. Go ahead and scroll down to the next page. This would just be the new bond debt service schedule. It's, that's more for Rich's purposes. But all in all, it's just a similar transaction that we just did, but on a much smaller scale. Anytime we can save you all some money, that's going to be the goal. And from a, you know, from a percentage, a present value savings percentage, this deal does look really good. Again, it's just the next one in line, and because it's coming callable next month, we're presenting it for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Cody. That's making the best of a bad time. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Cody, I just want to commend you and your firm in putting the first bond package, or the previous one, it isn't your first, bond package together. You working with our finance department and our finance director have done an excellent job of closely monitoring how we can reduce our interest rates and maximize the taxpayers' dollars. That leveraging is, I agree, wise planning, and your assistance and your firm have done a good job for us. I also agree that we have excellent staff doing an excellent job, and the timing of the market is incredible. Who would have thought that you could reduce interest rates when you're only paying 6 points, 2.6%? Just 2.5% and we can still cut that almost in half. It's amazing. And taking advantage of the opportunity is certainly, in my view, in the taxpayer's best interest. So, thank you, and thanks to Rich Severson and our fine finance department.
Thank you. Councilman Preister, well said. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Again, thank you, Cody, and thank you, Rich. Awesome job. Appreciate it very much. Okay, that'll take us to item nine, approved citizen communication. We did not receive any. Item 10, liquor licenses, none of those. Item 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading. 11A, ordinance number 3995. And Jim, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes. Request to rezone tax lots 2A and 2B located in the northwest quarter of Section 21, P14 and R13E from RS 72 to RE for the purpose of facilitating the construction of a 50-foot by 60-foot barn structure. Applicant John and Alyssa Butner, general location 8405 South 36th Street, case number Z-2003-04, by our planning manager.
Thank you. Again, this is third reading. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve ordinance number 3995.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, second by Welch. Any further discussion on 11A? Seeing none, please vote. Susan?
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. 11B, ordinance number 3966, request to annex Sanitary Improvement District Number 67, Normandy Hills.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Shannon?
Thank you. I would, at the request of legal, I'm going to make this a positive motion and move to approve ordinance number 3966, which we're all legally required to vote no on. Bree, would you like to talk to it?
Let's go ahead and get a second. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Shannon, second by Stinson, and that was a positive to vote for. Bree?
You're going to vote for me? That works. Thanks, Mayor. As you are all aware, the district court judge ruled against us in the two annexation cases in this matter. Therefore, we are not contiguous or adjacent to Normandy Hills, and I'll make the same comment for Cedar View, which is the next motion. It is, the appeal is going to be filed tomorrow, and it will be pending in the appellate court, but that does not operate to stay the judge's order. So, at this time, the council legally needs to vote no on this ordinance.
Thank you, Bree. Any questions or comments regarding 11B? Case council again needs to vote no for legal purposes. Please vote. Susan?
Mr. Stinson?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mr. Shannon?
No.
Mr. Preister?
No.
Mr. Burns?
No.
And Ms. Welch?
No.
All voting no, motion fails.
Takes us to 11C, same situation, ordinance number 3970, request to annex Sanitary Improvement District Number 242, Cedar View.
And again, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, second by Preister to approve. However, legally, we need to vote no on it. So, any questions? Seeing none, Susan, would you take the vote?
Mr. Stinson?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mr. Shannon?
No.
Mr. Preister?
No.
Mr. Burns?
No.
And Ms. Welch?
No.
All voting no, motion fails.
Thank you. Item number 12, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, 12A, ordinance number 3996, amending the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and authorize merit to sign. Rich?
Yeah, we need to go ahead and amend the budget this year because of the annexations and all of the debt that you just heard about just a couple of minutes ago. Other than that, we probably would have had no need, even in the midst of this COVID-19 pandemic, we probably would not have needed to amend the budget. However, since we needed to for the 30 million in bonds and for the other annexation positive attributes, we decided to make a couple of changes associated with the pandemic and other things that were going on. So, to that, to that issue, it's a, it's a big number. However, I think it's, it's pretty much kind of mechanical and administrative. The, the Budget Committee understood it, and I think Don was ready to talk just a little bit on this point. So, I'll let Don take it from here.
I'm going to hold off there. A second, Councilman Preister. Jim, I skipped you to read the ordinance. Would you read that ordinance before we take any further discussion, please?
Yes. An ordinance to adopt the amended budget statement to return the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rich. Yes, the Budget Committee that I serve on along with Councilman Cook and Burns did meet. We did plan. It was Councilman Cook's suggestion very early on that because we were going to annex, we would eventually need to amend the budget because there was no certainty, and we had not yet, at that time, considered specifically or made any actual annexations. So, this was anticipated. It is described pretty well in the agenda cover sheet that was just on the screen and is up in the agenda. It gives some explanation. We also have the amended state form, which is required by the state to file, and we have met all procedure in public notification. So, it is information we are being requested. This is the second reading, so normally it would be advanced on for a third reading. Tonight is scheduled for public hearing, but Mayor, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we...
Hold on. Councilman Preister, let me open the public hearing before we get there. Just before we go any further. So, this does require a public hearing, and I just want to make sure, is there anybody in the public that is wanting to speak on this topic? See anybody on Facebook? Okay, not seeing anyone yet. The only question I have is when the... All right, nobody in the public, so I'll close the public hearing, and then now I'll go back to Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate having the public comment period open first. Either way, the motion is to suspend our rules so that after the public hearing tonight, we actually can take a vote. It would eliminate the third reading. This way, for timeliness, we could advance it and send it on to the state. So, my motion is to suspend the rules, to vote on this now that we've conducted the public hearing tonight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, second by Welch to suspend the rules and waive third reading and vote tonight on ordinance number 3996. I need discussion on that. Mr. Mayor? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will mention that this does not provide for any tax increase. It is simply taking into account the fact that we annexed and have new annexations. We have refinanced some of that debt. Doing so, we have increased our actual budget from 81 million to 126 million. That's not really new spending, but because we're paying off the bonds and refinancing, we are spending and taking in, and that's required to be reported. We will, at a later time, make some purchases of some equipment for Public Works to service those newly annexed areas, and in doing so, we will need to, likely in July, to modify or amend our one- and six-year CIP. So, it will include those anticipated additional vehicles and some other aligned expenses. It's all foreseen. As I said, it provides for no tax increases. The bonds will create, in addition to the ones tonight, close to $3 million total in savings for the taxpayers. But once again, it's wise stewardship of the public's funds, and the budget does remain solid. It's balanced despite COVID. It's in good order, and the city of Bellevue can see clearly as they look at this that it's in good hands, and financially, we are very solid.
Thank you. Councilman Shannon, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm missing the point here tonight. We are being sold this as no big deal, no rush, no hurry, yet we want to suspend the rules and say this is an emergency, it has to happen tonight. So, I don't understand the impact of waiting two weeks to finish this properly versus suspending the rules and approving it tonight if it's no big deal. versus suspending the rules and approving it tonight. If it's no big deal, why can't we follow procedure?
Let's direct that to Councilman Preister. Did you?
I, I would just say that we have a requirement to file the amended budget with the state. This just gives us a little cushion. We have a time on that. I don't think it's extremely sensitive, but waiting will do nothing new. It will add nothing to it. And for timeliness in filing it and getting it to the state is the recommendation.
Rich, do you wanna put a touch on that?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that on Friday, we are refinancing the $31 million worth of bonds. So, our appropriation, even though we have just a little room to, to move, we can't go over our appropriation. And that was at 82 million. So, it's in the best interest to go ahead and approve that tonight before the 30 million is spent instead of waiting until the last minute. And, and that's why, that's why we're doing it.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Shannon?
That's a reasonable justification. There, there hadn't been one yet, but, you know, making room in our authorization, that's a valid reason to suspend the rules.
Okay, thank you for the question. Any other comments or questions? Susan, who's our motion and second?
Motion is Preister. Second is Ms. Welch.
Okay, so we have a motion by Preister, seconded by Welch to suspend the rules. Any other questions? Comments? Susan, take the vote, please.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I will move to approve the ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch to approve ordinance number 3996. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I wanna thank our city administrator, Jim Risto, Rich Seaverston, Marcy Horton and their staff for working with the Budget Task Force and getting this amended budget presented to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Cook. Okay, Susan, would you take the vote?
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. 12B, ordinance number 3997, revised compensation ordinance due to recent changes to positions in the city. Jim, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication, repealing ordinance number 3930, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up ordinance number 3997 for public hearing. So is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding ordinance number 3997? Please make yourself known. Nothing on Facebook? Okay. Nothing on our go-to meeting that I see. So, close the public hearing on ordinance number 3997 and is there any discussion? Okay, that third, third and final reading will be held June 16th, 2020. Item number 13, ordinances for introduction, first reading. 13A, ordinance number 3998, authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, series 2020C, in an amount not to exceed $2,070,000. And is, Rich, do you wanna jump in there?
Yeah, those are the ones that Cody talked about at the end of his presentation. And the, the iron is hot, so we'd like to, again, suspend the rules in order to save money because we think that if we get to market quickly, there's significant savings.
Okay, Mr. Risto, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes. Ordinance number 3966, an ordinance authorizing the issues, issuance of general obligation refunding bonds of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska in one or more series in the aggregate stated principal amount of not to exceed $2,200,000 for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of $2,625,000. Outstanding principal amount of general obligation refunding bond series 2015, dated July 15th, 2015, prescribing the form of such bonds to be issued and authorizing officers of the city to approve certain final terms of the bonds, providing for the levy and collections of taxes to pay the same, if necessary, providing for the sale of bonds, authorizing the delivery of bonds to the purchaser, and providing for the disposition of bond proceeds and ordering the ordinance published in papable form.
Thank you. For the same reason as the last bond series, administration and finances asking to waive the rules requiring three readings to hold public hearing tonight and vote. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I will make a motion that we suspend our rules requiring three readings, that we conduct the public hearing tonight and following the public hearing that we vote on this bond approval ordinance 3997.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch to suspend the rules requiring three readings. Are there any comments or questions regarding that?
I have a question for Bree.
Okay.
Bree, in, in the reading of that ordinance, I heard numbers other than what's printed in our agenda. Are we good?
What, what number did you hear, Pat? Councilman Chad?
At, when you were reading it, we're talking about not to exceed 2.6 million. The agenda shows 2,070,000.
I see that.
Yeah, so how the ordinance is set up is it's the 2,625,000 is stated here for not to exceed 2,200,000. So it's going to be as read by Jim.
So do we need to make a motion to amend the, what's here? So that the public is informed, or?
You, you'll be fine because the rule just states that it has to be read at the city council meeting, and since it was read, that would cover it.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification because the agenda's wrong.
I appreciate it.
Which brings me to a second question. The ordinance number I read was 3998 and Jim read 3966. Am I looking at that wrong?
Give me just a second. It's written two ways in Spark.
Okay.
Susan, is the correct number 3998 as stated on the ordinance that is up on this?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Jim, I hate to do this to you, but will you read, read that as ordinance number 3998?
Certainly. Could you pick a shorter one to do this on?
Nope.
Well, this is 3988, correct?
98.
3998. Ordinance number 3998, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska in one or more series in the aggregate stated principal amount of not to exceed $2,200,000 for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of the $2,625,000 outstanding principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, series 2015, dated July 15th, 2015, prescribing the form of such bonds to be issued and authorizing officers of the city to approve certain final terms of the bonds, providing for the levy and collections of taxes to pay the same, if necessary, providing for the sale of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, and providing for the disposition of bond proceeds and ordering the ordinance published in papable form.
Thank you. Councilman Preister, would you just confirm that your motion is for ordinance number 3998 as Mr. Risto just read?
Yes, Mayor, I will confirm. My intended and my motion was meant for ordinance 3998.
And my second follows that.
Okay, thank you. And any further questions?
I, I have a comment, Mayor, if I may.
Okay, yep.
Just for some clarification on the numbers there. As Councilman Shannon pointed out, that the, where it says a portion of the 2,625,000, that's because we're, we're looking at refunding not all of them because we're, we are not proposing to refinance the, the maturity that's going to occur on December 15th of this year. So, you have more bonds outstanding than you actually need proceeds for because it just wouldn't produce any savings to include that. It would only, it would only add to the cost of issuance. So we're proposing to leave that outstanding, either, again, pay it off when we close this refunding issue or you can just leave that one maturity outstanding and, and pay it as scheduled in December of this year. That's why those amounts look a little funny. You're, you're refunding more bonds than where you're actually, or you're, you're issuing an amount not to exceed 2.2 million, but you actually have more bonds than that outstanding.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Any questions on Cody's comments? Okay, that was a motion by Preister, seconded by Welch to, we're still on waiving the rules. The three readings, correct?
Correct. Yes.
So, please vote.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Okay, regarding ordinance number 3998, I will open up for public hearing now. Is there anybody out there in the audience that would like to speak regarding the ordinance? Okay, seeing nobody or hearing nobody. I'll close the public hearing and is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 3998.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns to approve ordinance 3998. Any further questions? Please vote.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 13B, ordinance number 3999, authorizing the mayor and chief of police after the declaration of any emergency to enact certain orders to protect the community. Jim, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend Article 2, Chapter 1 of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section 2.96 regarding declarations of emergency and restrictions of activities and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you.
Bree, please.
Yep, Bree?
Thank you, Mayor. There was a possibility of requesting the waiver of the rules on this ordinance as stated on the agenda. In consultation with the city administrator and after the special meeting in this council passing a resolution last night, my legal advice would be to do first reading tonight and then second reading on June 16th for public hearing, and then we could consider waiving the third reading at that time. That would be my advice.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bree or on that? Okay, seeing none, the second reading and public hearing will be June 16th, 2020 on ordinance number 3999. Item 14, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. 14A, recommendation to approve event application for Kevin Power to host his sixth annual private charity event to raise donations for the Bellevue Food Pantry at his home, 108 Fox Meadow Court on Saturday, July 25th, 2020, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM with live music and waive the $50 event fee. And I will open, let me open that up for public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak regarding the special event? Okay, seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Need a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve 14A.
And I'll second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Shannon. Discussion, anything? Seeing none, Susan, would you take the vote?
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 15 is Resolutions, 15A, Resolution number 2020-23, awarding the 36th Street North 370 Sheridan Road Bellevue Project, identified as MAPPA 50615, to Chaz Verona and Sun Construction Company in an amount not to exceed with city share of 6,375,460 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to just make a quick comment. Glad to see this moving forward. I hope the people in Bellevue will understand that now that we're gonna probably, we're gonna see some construction on 36th Street as this project starts to be, starts moving forward. I think the plan on starting to see some dirt move is probably the fall of this year. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2020-23.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any discussion on 2020-23? Seeing nobody, would you take the vote, Susan?
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Motion carried. All voting yes.
Thank you. 15B, Resolution number 2020-24, regarding the risk exposure to COVID-19 through the use of municipal property for adult and youth recreational programs and authorize the mayor to sign. Have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2020-24.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stinson. Any discussion? Seeing nobody, would you please take the vote, Susan?
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. 15D, Resolution number 2020-26, approval of the proposed budget for the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency 2020-2021 fiscal year budget and authorize the mayor to sign. Looking for a motion. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve Resolution 2020-26.
Second.
Motion by Preister- Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please vote. Susan?
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, item 17, Administration Reports, uh, those are under, uh, reconstruction there, but, uh, Jim, you wanted to give a report, I hope, on COVID-19. And I did see some questions on Facebook regarding, uh, um, curfews. So if you touch on that first, that'd be great.
Yep, kind of get two sides. We'll talk a little bit about our emergency operations that transpired this weekend, which led to the curfew discussion as well as our COVID. It's obviously done with COVID. Uh, most of you guys have been briefed by Don Preister on some of the health directives. And all of those are online at www.bellview.gov for the public if they want to go in and see what the new health directives all break out as far as like restaurant capacity, bars, et cetera. Uh, we get into from a city operation, a lot of discussion here of what to do with our parks and our pools. This year, we're going to plan on just on, uh, the middle of June, we're still working through the actual opening. We'll open Casio and Gilbert, uh, as our first two pools. We're going to hold another pool back, which I think is doubting, which will be maybe in reserve for swim lessons because it does have the deep end. Uh, some discussions with Councilman Preister is why open those two pools? Those are the two easiest pools for us to manage as far as social distancing and having our staff on board so we can direct and maintain our, our health directives. Uh, one of our other pools, a couple of them, since we weren't sure where we were going, we didn't put a lot of time into maintenance of it early on. So a couple of our pools, we have not been able to complete our maintenance timely enough, which we'll put on the back burner, uh, as we work through this to handle these two pools. In addition to that, we won't open splash pads. I know the public is asking why. Our, when you look at our pools, we're going to be able to let so many people in during a 90-minute course. Have those, and I think it's 25%, it's 25% capacity. They will depart half hour closure to clean and sanitize and then reopen. Um, anybody that's outside in the appropriate line, that's socially distancing them while they're standing in line will be the next wave in. If there is no long line, the ones that left can come back again at no additional cost. But there we can control the quantity of people that enter that facility. We're at splash pads. We don't have staff on splash pads. We don't have the manpower to stand by and watch what happens. So you could have a large crowd at the splash pads we've elected at this time since within our, our health directives that we don't think we can manage that to meet those needs. So we'll keep those closed at this time and we evaluate as we go through June to see if they change more. So we'll leave those as well as the restrooms at the splash, splash, splash pads closed. A lot of guidelines on our youth sports, you guys just approved one of the liability things, but sorry, youth sports will reopen. We'll probably have adult sports pulling in on the same thing. So navigating, working through that, I think that's all mid-June. Those things will happen. Um, along with that, some of the other things this weekend, Friday night or Friday afternoon, it's Saturday. This too will be on our website, but the Health Department will be doing some COVID testing at our fire training center. I think they're going to do up to 600 or 900 tests. I'm not sure of the number of it. You can find all the data on that testing for COVID requirements. I think that's going through Test Nebraska. So that'll transpire in our, in our community here this weekend. So a lot of things just continually evolve, better be flexible and move through some of these things and make sure that we're following within the health directives. Farmers Market will open this weekend. They submitted to the Health Department their safety plan. Um, there's things we'll do to support them as far as like the restrooms will open those during the Farmers Market and then re-close those since we won't have the ability to keep those sanitized during the week. So restrooms and the bathroom at the ball field will be opened because we will have large, larger attendees there. And then we've got sanitation programs in place to keep that going. So Farmers Market is moving to get the things that they need to have done. Now, moving over to emergency operations. So as you guys are aware, this weekend was a very trying weekend for the metropolitan area. Um, a lot of things evolved Friday night into Saturday. Um, and then as Sunday arrived, a lot of intelligence came through that there was potential for disruptions in Sarpay County, largely in our community. Our, uh, EOC, our Emergency Operations Center was opened at noon. We had some intel that came to us early Sunday morning that caused us enough concern to take action to be available and be ready for anything that could bubble out from what we had saw up in Omaha the prior day. Uh, that Operation Center stayed open from noon till about 10:30, 11 o'clock. Um, I gotta tell you, there's a lot of inter-agency cooperation. We work closely with Sarpy, Papillion, and La Vista to support our needs here. Um, along with often Air Force Base. I gotta tell you, from our perspective, a lot of things were evolving as the day went on. Uh, we planned for the worst. It actually turned out not to be the worst, which was great. Our demonstrators were civil. Um, if, if any saw this, it doesn't cover all of it, but a lot of our officers went up and joined arm-in-arm with the protesters. We actually fed a lot of the protesters pizza too, so which was a nice, nice thing. But with that, there was talk about an outreach from our police department and the feedback that we've gotten is just tremendous. Also have to say that through this, some of the things as the day developed, it was a long, hard day and actually a weekend for a lot of our employees. Our police department was tasked to the limit as far as what could be potential coming their way. The professionalism, I'll take our interim acting chief, Dargy, stepped up to the plate and did a fantastic job organizing and preparing and executing what transpired through the day, Sunday into Monday and into today. Uh, Perry Guido, Chief Guido and his team were with us throughout the entire day too. Our Public Works Department, Jeff Roberts, they organized and there was a lot of things that we needed. Bellevue Public Schools provided buses to us for transport. Legal was here. Uh, I gotta tell you, the professionalism commitment that I saw from a lot of our employees from our pub, from our, uh, sworn officers right down to a guy that's running a dump truck for us is unbelievable. Um, I gotta say, there's a lot of pride there to see how our city employees reacted to the events that were surrounding us. Very civil, very organized, very efficient. Um, nothing makes your day greater to see that kind of happen with us here as well as the partnerships that we've got with some of our surrounding communities. With that, uh, we watched Omaha put a curfew in place. Uh, we, we decided on Sunday to find a pathway to have that tool available to us, um, had things worsened for us. As the morning or the afternoon developed, we found that we really didn't have a process, a legal process. Hence, you guys participating in a 24-hour notice to give the mayor the ability, allow the police chief to put that curfew in place should we need that tool in our, on our box. Literally on Monday, we had not planned to use the curfew, but as events evolved in Omaha, our partnership with Sarpay County and Papillion and La Vista, we agreed that we would go together as a city. Papillion had some concerns as well as La Vista. They took a different course on how they interpreted their ordinances, which we wanted to make sure we were legally prepared. So, um, if somebody breaks the curfew and we don't have the legal means in the process, it would be kind of an embarrassment to turn right around and have to release them, put ourselves in a liability situation. So appreciate you guys acting fast with us to get that in place, but when you get that approved Monday night, it was approved Monday night. We enacted it. It was short notice to our public and our businesses. Some of our businesses chose to close early, uh, based on intel they were getting from their corporate headquarters in Omaha and the like. So it kind of flowed through our community. It was an inconvenience for some, um, but, you know, public safety was our number one concern. We felt that that curfew would help rise control and curb some of the things we thought were going to happen here, which fortunately they did not. Still on our tool chest, so should something develop, I don't think we're out of this situation. We pray that we, we are. Our community's been fortunate, um, because Harrison, but we just want to make sure we're prepared. And again, the team that we have here, props to them. I, they did a fantastic job through the weekend. Very proud of them and took a lot of time away from their families on a weekend, uh, into the night. I know like Chief Dargy, we know they were working until 11 o'clock last night on situations. And I do want to dispel that there was some discussion, why didn't we support Omaha Friday or Saturday? Omaha did not ask us for bodies. Uh, Omaha came and asked us for equipment on Saturday. I think they were caught a little off guard Friday night as to what was going to transpire, but they never asked us for our PD to support them. Uh, we literally heard Saturday had excess capacity in officers. There were 40 officers probably on standby. So we didn't feel the need just to send ours up there to be there. Uh, if they needed them, we would have provided them. We did provide officers last night and tonight. Um, so they were there. We provided some traffic control forum Sunday, then into the, um, the police facility in Omaha. So when they needed our officers, our officers stepped up and went up and supported them. So they were there when they were asked for, and it felt pretty good that our team was committed and got there quickly. So I, I don't want people to think, why wasn't Bellevue there? They were probably in excess of capacity in Omaha. We looked at a lot of it. It was Douglas County resources. Sarpy SWAT was there. That was something they called specifically for. We didn't need to support it at that time, but when we did, we were there. So that's my rundown.
Mayor? I'm going to add two, two more people, I'm going to add two more people to that list. Uh, Mark Albert, it was very, uh, nice to have him filling in as our emergency manager. Um, it really helps make things run smoothly when you have somebody that, that's had that past experience. Um, so he was, uh, very instrumental in keeping things going. Um, and Jim, yourself, uh, 12-hour day on a Sunday. Um, maybe you probably did 13. I think mine was 12. I left before you, so. Uh, fantastic job. Uh, probably one of the only things that's harder to put together than River Fest is going through one of these catastrophes or something. So that, that River Fest, uh, really, uh, prepared you for the job. And I mentioned one more thing, curfew. There is no curfew this evening. We did lift that. Um, technically, it looked like we put a three-day in there yesterday, but our intelligence came back four o'clock today with the other police departments and it was, uh, we don't think it was necessary. So we did lift the curfew. So there is no curfew in place at this time. So, uh, Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mayor. That was just going to be my question with regards to, um, the curfew tonight, and I just want to reiterate the things that have been said about, it's nice to hear really good things coming out of the city of Bellevue because we've always known that the people were really good and it's nice to get the good publicity that we've long deserved. So thank you to all that did hard work to make that happen.
All right. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to commend Chief Dargy and our police force, particularly those officers who were there while the demonstration was going on. The demonstrators were peaceful. They were executing their First Amendment rights and doing so in a very civil manner without any ill intentions of vandalism. There's a distinction between somebody who is wanting to make a point and petition their government and somebody who is just agitating intentionally for trouble and destruction. Our police officers who are on the line, working right with the protesters was exceptional. The reports that I heard and the news media presentation that I actually witnessed on the news was to make me proud and I think to make our entire leadership of the police department and the officers very proud. So I commend them. I too know of the long day that was put in by you, Mayor, and I thank you for that. Uh, certainly, our chief, our administrator, Jim Ristow, did an exceptional job coordinating with everybody, pulling things together, sending information, monitoring the situation, and it was because of that good planning. Whatever may have happened, we were prepared, very well prepared. Chief Guido and his staff in the fire department were well-prepared. Public Works, as he mentioned, Jeff Roberts was right there as well. Our legal, Ms. Robbins was making sure that all legal guidelines were followed closely all over the weekend, all on a Sunday. So my compliments and my admiration and respect to all of the Emergency Operations Command for their efforts and all of their staff in making sure Bellevue residents were afforded their liberties and at the same time, the public was well planned for to be protected in the event that something did occur. Unfortunately, it didn't. So to all, job well done. Thank you. You made me proud again.
And thanks, uh, Councilman Preister. Uh, Bree Robbins, just so you know, she's been an asset to the city. Um, earned her money many times over here, but she did spend a full day and probably another 12-hour day, I think, on Sunday. Um, when, you know, so that's, that's going above and beyond as well. So. Uh, Jim, did you have something else?
Yeah, there was a Facebook comment about our state of emergency. So I just want to clarify if there, if anybody's listening, that we have not lifted the state of emergency. That's still in effect. Um, while the curfew has been lifted, we've left the state of emergency considering what is happening in our metropolitan area. So should events go to, go to the south on us rather quickly, we have the ability to, uh, enact what our, we can go back to a curfew or anything along that line, um, gives us some op- operational things that we can do. So the state of emergency has not been lifted or the curfew has. So we're still in an operation tempo, uh, very guarded as to what's transpiring in our metropolitan area. That's it.
Thank you. All right, we'll see if I have a motion to adjourn or?
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns to adjourn. Please vote.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Everybody stay safe.